Councilor Strickland.
Here.
Councilor Jackson.
Here.
Councilor Chambers. Councilor Starnes.
Here.
Councilor Vortek.
Here.
Councilor Stritchett.
Here.
Councilor Vane.
Here.
Declare the quorum, President, calling the public hearing forward. Resolution number one, to authorize the mayor to adjourn his meeting for Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five. As amended, is there any one president that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Hearing none, is there any one president that would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Orace number two, to pre-zon property located outside the city limits, south of Old Ridge Road, adjacent to Glenbrook Eight, as R three. Is there any one president that would like to speak in favor of this resolution? Hearing none, is there any one president that would like to speak in opposition of this resolution? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Resolution number three, due to concerns for the public health and safety, specifically the spread of COVID-19, this public hearing is being rescheduled to October fifth, twenty twenty-one. A resolution for this change is on tonight's considered amendment. Now, we'll move into our regular agenda. During my time at Stanford, we had some in our education, something that will get there. Let the leaders sit by, of the United States of America. What is your stance, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Hi, everyone. There were thanks for this day, and for the ability to come here. And in the honor of discussing business board, we just ask you to keep your hands on the country's leaders' boards. They sort out some various situations, and we just ask you to give us guidance and allow us to make the decisions that you may be prepared to make.
Councilor, call the roll, please.
Councilor Strickland.
Here.
Councilor Jackson.
Here.
Councilor Chambers. Councilor Starnes.
Here.
Councilor Vortek.
Here.
Councilor Stritchett.
Here.
Councilor Vane.
Here.
Declare the quorum, President, calling the meeting forward. I just want to say that Councilor Chambers, he's in route from Birmingham, so he should be here approximately about six thirty. The character trait of law is intended, shown before a person or task by any man or body of attention. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the matters for the public hearing in City Council meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Do we hear it? We have the motion. We have the motion, do we have the second? We have the second, is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor for adopting the minutes, raise your hand. All in favor by a light sign, the minutes are adopted. At this time, we'll welcome any comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda. This thing. If you would please state your name and address for the record, you got three minutes to address the council.
Sign and also. John, I think to let me trace, I'm going to be speaking on eight, nine, and eleven resolutions. The first one is the piece of the one they're spending for the Pratt Museum of Southern Industry. I was looking through the budget, and I noticed one previous, twenty twenty-one. And I noticed that it was talked about in the budget for the Autark Heritage Association. So I'm assuming this has been in the works for some time. I then attended the finance committee meeting, and they talked about the metal building up there, up in the hill. Then I went to the revenue department, and I looked to see who owned that property. And I was under the assumption it was HPRA, but am I mistaken? Is it the city, or is it HPRA that owns that building? So it is HPRA.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't know how that works, since HPRA is a different entity that we're giving money to the heritage to do a building that somebody else owns. So I'm just a bit confused about that. Also, I'm wondering how they came up with that seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollar figure? Have you seen the paperwork where the amounts are laid out, so it comes to that total? I mean, you know, you can pull a number out of a hat. So have you actually seen the figures from the different entities that said, here's what the total's going to be when we do that study?
Do you want to address counsel, then?
I can really say, as I did bring that presentation to myself, and also to the finance committee, and I think you're some type of boss of all council. I can't, I have a lot of questions answered through that presentation.
But you saw the, we saw the documentation, so that total of seventy-six eight hundred came off. I mean, we said, okay, this is what you mean, not somebody saying, oh, seventy-six thousand eight hundred. That's, that's all I assumed on, how do you, how did they come about that figure?
Yes, they took about the documentation.
I beg your pardon?
They provide a documentation from Pratt.
So, okay, so citizens will be seeing that also, correct? Since it's being decided upon here? I'm just, since you're deciding upon it here to spend that money. Okay, anyway, the second one is, of course, the one million fifty thousand dollars for the park, the Parks and Recreation. I looked at the resolution, and it says that since the onset of the COVID pandemic, citizens of Prattville have been under various lockdowns and shelter-in-place guidelines that have made it burdensome to participate in daily exercise desired by many of them, whereas the city desires to be responsive to the needs of certain disproportionately impacted communities in the city. What are those? I don't understand that, the disproportionately impacted communities. Who would that be?
As family, if you have a time. And what we should wish.
Never mind.
Is there anything one else that would like to address, council? Hearing none, Mr. Mayor, we have a report.
Yes, my last question for the President. I have that answer. Mr. Jeff will end with the Central County College, the board. We have the President, thank you for it.
Good evening, everyone, how are you doing? I think Jeff Landis, Central County College President. And I'd like to tell you where we are on the mandate of the council. That's okay. And then I will give you some documentation to back it up. First of all, Randy is, Randy Mitchell is here, she's our site leader at our facility at Prattville. And she'll continue to be our new site leader at a new facility, hopefully in Prattville. So we narrowed it down, it's been a long journey for us. And we narrowed it down, we entered into a letter of intention to purchase property that is currently owned by East Memorial Baptist Church, which is fifty thousand square feet, so I'm twenty-four acres. It's a prime location, and with, with your indulgence, I'll kind of go through briefly those numbers to us and what I think the effect we can make upon this area. So currently, from the state of Alabama, we get eight point nine million dollars per three to us. This particular budget for this particular project will be about fifty twenty dollars. We, we plan on spending about four point one billion dollars at that end this three year. We're going to hire approximately forty new employees that are incrementally over time. If the project goes through, we'll start classes at the location in January. We'll greatly expand this program, because I like their, a lot of it. We're going to expand the academic programs for students, like a four-year college. We're going to complete academic and technical two-year programs there, so you can start and finish a student program there. Where currently you cannot do that at our facility at Prattville. Workforce programs have not really been taken care of at the current location, so expanded operation, many classroom, we'll be able to. Our work programs have been manufacturing instrumentation, equipment operations certification technician, robotics, electronics, which is what we'll call PLCs, maintenance programs, construction, healthcare, information technology, software logistics, and if I'm successful, there is the annual hall of international company. If we go through with that project, that project will be the prime building. And so we'll be able to service a huge area of opportunity to help also attract new companies that need that workforce into this area. Exponentially expansion of our new enrollment programs for our high schools. We already do a lot, we'd like to, we can do a lot more, especially with this system being lovely and having more opportunities at that college for education. Our technical training lab will be able to support advanced manufacturing and healthcare. In fact, I just received word two weeks ago that I have received about a half million dollars for grants for the Prattville Division. One is for a new standalone health and program, as we all know, the healthcare provider would be needing support. The other one is an advanced manufacturing technology, it's manufacturing four point O, which is, not to get too technical, but it's manufacturing operations that controls all the machines on the shop floor, the escape system, so it's just a software program. We'll be able to teach cyber with that as well. So we'll be the first and only community college in the state of Alabama to offer that program. We'll do it right here at Prattville. We'll also be able to expand our classes at night and on the weekend. And so I think that that would be a very good opportunity for us to expand our programs, not only for the students, our traditional students, but also our adult students and the community as well. We want to focus on doing these existing industries, the ground technical advisory groups, and so we already have some. Expand that. I know COVID has really limited a lot of companies being with us, so we want to make sure they're an equal part, they really drive what we do. We look, I look at a lot of numbers from economic impact, but also the companies making big decisions. As well. We definitely want to be great partners, and we want to share our facilities with Prattville citizens and also Autark citizens as well. And that really means including our meeting rooms, our gym tour, athletic facilities, anything else that will fill that out, particularly as well. We want also to start new sports at that location, arts, theater, the students' tent. And so we have great plans for that. I mentioned briefly about adult education. We really want to make an impact in adult education this area, really go by my point, it also say, we think that that's a huge need, there's still a half a million people out there who want higher education. With some skill sets, we can take them through our programs, they can go fly work level, be really good students. Now, I'll shift gears and kind of talk about the economic benefits for this particular piece of property. And why it's so important for us and for all of us, the partners in this particular program. We're going to create an economic engine to support education and workforce in adult education like you've never seen before. We're going to be able to do sales tax circulation from increasing local purchasing goods and services, hiring all those people, and increase the number of students. Currently, we have around two hundred students right now. Our projected goal is to go up to thirty-five hundred students at that one location within a ten-year period, if not earlier. Our total population right now is sixteen hundred, so we expect exponential growth to come forward soon. It's going to be a va, a major venue for community activities in Kansas City. We want to open that to whoever wants to come and use that facility for meetings. We want to help focus on major recruitment activities for a business industry that's on our background. We want to meet regularly with existing industries to make sure we understand all of their needs. And existing industries, there's sixteen, there's industry clusters, there's customer service, manufacturing, law enforcement. We want to make sure we're great partners with them. We want to be a major partner with the Talke County and the City of Prattville, consistent with your season twelve. We want to help improve the quality of life that we can, through offering great education and workforce programs. And for that, I'm here to ask, with our budget, we have a deficit, and we would ask kindly for you to, you for to seek any assistance from the Talke County and the City of Prattville, our investment, a partner, local investment, a four billion dollars to support our mutual capital investment, financial, to immediately add workforce to this area. And we're able to pull with all the edibles, start classes in January. And so we're very, very excited about the opportunity. And if you do provision on that, we can, if you're comfortable with it, we can, that is part of it. We're excited about the opportunity. We've looked at several locations, around a bunch of locations, prepared this, give a letter of intent. For just as soon as we're able to pull all the funding together, we'll work on this and move forward. We'll do some renovations as well to offer some more biology, chemistry programs, and stuff that we really don't have there for this one. So, all of them, if you have any questions.
Is there any questions from the council? Yeah, are you going to be going to your local city camp as well?
Oh, absolutely, that's, that's still the main camp, it's always will be. This one is probably going to outgrow it, if you just look at the population trends. And this is a growing area, that's staying about one percent growth, et cetera. So that's going to be very, very important to us. Happily there, we had Talladega and Children'sburg. We just need to expand it at Prattville, and we want to expand it here in the City of Prattville. We have looked at other locations as well, so we're excited about the extension here.
Is there any other questions from the council? Thank you.
Thanks very much, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chad, and look forward to the future, look forward to working with you and CAC and everybody else to help run this Prattville campus now.
Okay, sir.
Thank you. Councilors, good to see you all again. I hope that each of you had a nice, lucky day weekend like I did. I think that we all know, Mother Nature's always the one who hurts, and Mother Nature provides some challenges, but I'm proud to say that overall, the city's behaved very, very well, doing some advanced events. So this goes to show that some of our proper planning and projects have helped us out and the Mother Nature will give us some more breaks in the very near future. But they're going to be successful in whatever you choose to do. It takes a mission and commitment, preparation and roadmap. I think a strong culture is one of the most important components of an overarching conversation like this city. Our departments have laid out their vision and need to fund to accomplish our goals, but high-quality services, there are citizens that grow accustomed to. I want to thank all of our employees, department heads, and faculty citizens for working with this administration over the past ten-plus years. As we evolve our budgeting process, we have left a lump sum budgeting process behind us, and we progress to a transparent, line item budget. Our budget presentations have been transformed, and this will, year twenty twenty-two budget is in the mailbox. Most of y'all have found one by now. Counselor, by budgeting goals, I would be to provide our staff, resources, and confidence to effectively budget for current needs, as well as three-year, three-year projections. Our enterprise funds, the public works concept, and the FDR accounts have taken us to the level of our now. Our next goal will be multi-year budget. I look forward to working with this council, our city employees, and our citizens over the next fiscal year. Counselors, again, the proposed FY twenty twenty-two budget is in the mailbox waiting for you. I'll wait for council direction to place this on website. I would like to, like to especially thank Lisa Thrash, and hopefully, partly stand up for the hard work of the department handling this budget. On another note, please monitor Calvert's nine-eleven ceremony, that will be held at the State Building Saturday, September eleventh, at seven thirty a.m., late twenties, as we remember on the twentieth anniversary. Also, on another notice, a venture term coming back into town, Bill Martin Keller guarding championships, September seventeenth and nineteenth. I mentioned for a good while now, we have some good news, some bad news. Stormwater and sewer pipes still progressing around the City of Prattville. Please use caution in these areas. Recently, over here on Washington Street, we've made some progress, Mother Nature made herself known. I'll have to say, probably not quite as, as much on Washington Street as it did on, on Washington Avenue. I've been pretty, I've been working in that area, pretty, making some pretty big progress with the last storm, it really, to reflect about how it's having to be so much a neat component if you're going to have a product in, in the whole time. But, President, I see my report.
Thank you, is there any questions from, from the council? All right, thank you, thank you. At this time, we'll move into our report from council's special committees, Councilor President.
Yes, sir, I have a report on the patio liquor service committee. Meeting was held, especially a voting committee, for patio liquor service held Tuesday afternoon, August twenty-fourth, at four p.m., here in Council Chambers. All seven members were present. APC license holders and the public were invited to make comments and to ask questions. No formal recommendations were made. However, committee discussed and noted the following. Originally proposed ordinance does require APC and city-approved patio sites, which are licensed, to reapply to the city. There is a nominal fee for this application. Committee was told monetary jail penalties cited in the proposed ordinance were found to be City of Prattville boilerplate language. It was also informed, existing city ordinance authorized as a city municipal judge to determine if penalties and RP's are appropriate, and if so, what they will be. Grandfather APC slash city-approved patio serving licenses is a possible future recommendation. At present, Historic Preservation Commission does not have written commercial building effects guidelines, only recent cases as a precedent. Given ABC's personal inspection and review of each licensee's site prior to issuance, issuance of the license, it was attested to, which was attested to? About two licensees, all of us, hearing our meeting. Question was raised on the necessity of additional city oversight. And during closing comments, one committee member questioned the need for the proposed ordinance. Additional information was requested. Number of currently operating patio licensees and their location, which has subsequently been provided and received. And the current city building codes relating to permanent fences versus fire safety issues for ingress and egress. Committee tentatively set a follow-up meeting for Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, subject to prior receipt of requested information. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jack. Councilor Chambers. Councilor Vortek. Councilor Strickett. Yes, sir, on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth of August, the, excuse me, committee met on the ordinance pertaining to the dog chain ordinance and changes of amendments may be made with the police department archiving Andrew Odom and several citizens. So actually, I'll be attempting to, I was on the ask that we moved the amendments of not made on the ordinance due to the fact that of illness and family situations, so. But we're moving along fairly well on that, maybe we come to some pretty good understanding of what direction we're going to go in. Thank you, Councilor.
Yes, sir.
The finance committee met on August twenty-seventh at three p.m. Council Chambers, we had a presentation on the Talke County Heritage Association to discuss the request for Attorney General's opinion on police jurisdiction. Also, various properties in the city, straight center, increase of city's capitalization threshold for certain classes of assets, American Rescue Plan Act requests, HPRA holidays, and the budgets. Tonight, we have the opportunity to create a consent agenda on the following items. Resolution number one, to reschedule a public hearing to consider the revocation of ammo lines Prattville, available to a business that put on hours, business licenses. Resolution number two, to declare various weed laws to be a public nuisance where they're made instead of public hearing for Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of Code of Alabama, and consent by amendment. Resolution number three, to authorize the city attorney to file weed lanes on certain properties. Resolution number four, to amend the city's capitalization threshold for certain classes of assets. The chair will entertain a motion to place these items on a consent agenda. We have a motion, we have a second.
Sir.
We have a second. All those who think of replacing this resolution on consent agenda, raise your hand. Outposed by a light sign, we now have a consent agenda in force. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. So, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second, is there any discussion on any item on consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor for adopting the consent agenda, raise your hand. Outposed by a light sign, the consent agenda is adopted. We will now move to a regular agenda. Resolution number one, to authorize the mayors have various weed laws made for Title XI, Chapter sixty-seven of Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended. Councilor Vortek will introduce this vote.
Yes. Whereas the ordinance of overgrown grass and weeds, one, is increased for public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, vines, snakes, and skids. Another requirement, two, may cause purpose spread of weeds, three, may have a breeding such class level that can inflict injury on a person going with such property, and four, may also pose a fire hazard to respiratory death. And whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville declared the Resolution Book twenty twenty-one dash A, Page one thirty-four, will be a bonus of overgrown grass and weeds, various addresses in the City of Prattville constitute a public nuisance, and set a public hearing to discuss said nuisance system. And whereas notices required by Section eleven dash seven dash six, City Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five as amended, was provided in the progress of certified mail in by side and on the subject property. And whereas the Prattville Police Department code enforcement officer has inspected said properties and determined that the public nuisance still exists. And whereas the City Council will have the required public hearing at six p.m. on September seventh, twenty twenty-one, permitting the owners for said properties to present evidence, objections, and protests regarding the proposed removal of weeds. Now therefore, be it resolved, but the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abus of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance, one sixteen Collin Lane and two oh three Azelia Drive. Be it further resolved, the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the properties listed above cut or removed using city forces or private contractors. Any property owner shall have a right to have any weeds removed at her own expense, provided the removal is done prior to commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal, so moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor for this resolution, raise your hand. Outposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. Orace number two, to pre-zon property located outside of city limits, south of Old Ridge Road, adjacent to Glenbrook Eight, as R three. This is the second reading. This ordinance was held from August third, twenty twenty-one, council meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor for this ordinance, raise your hand. Outposed by a light sign, the ordinance is adopted. Orace number three. Petition for an annihilation of south of Old Ridge Road, adjacent to Glenbrook Eight. Councilor Strickett, you introduce this ordinance.
Yes, sir. To be your man of the City Council, the City of Prattville Alabama, the City of Prattville with a constituent population of over six thousand inhabitants located in the state of Alabama. That the petition has been presented by all owners of the property located in San Antonio, which are contiguous to the corporate limits of the City of Prattville, as they are now situated. That property described in the petition's son, the act, is described in the action act. And said property does not lie within the corporate limits of any other municipality. That all owners was defined by Section eleven forty-two, number eight, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, as amended, and executed, and petition requesting a property be annexed to the City of Prattville. And that the City of Prattville lines that is interested in the City of Prattville, and is a habitance to annex said property. And the City Council of the City of Prattville lines the petition as met all requirements of Section eleven forty-two, number eight, for Section eleven forty-two, number three, Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Being further ordained by the City Council, the City of Prattville Alabama, the corporate limits of the City of Prattville be extended and arranged through a license to follow.
be extended and arranged through a license to the foreign property described in the action act. That such property shall become the forward area property of Alabama on passage of publication of this ordinance as required by law. Be it further ordained that the property of the petition be filed with the office of the governor appropriate of the copper county of Alabama and a disorder to be published in the Montgomery Art Institute of the copper county of Alabama. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. By order of council rules, unless it's suspended, the order of society considered not. Is there a motion to suspend rules? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any special suspension, suspension of the rules? Hearing none, backfurther we conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Strickland.
Yeah.
Counselor Daxton.
Yeah.
Counselor Chambers. Counselor Scharms.
Yeah.
Counselor Borde.
Yeah.
Counselor Strickland.
Counselor Reddell.
Yeah.
The rules are suspended. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor for this ordinance, raise your right hand. Outposed by a light sign, the ordinance is adopted. Orness number four, to amend the City of Frattle code board, this is chapter ten, animals are number two, dogs, section ten dash forty-two, in pain. Treating dogs prohibited in section ten dash forty-three, dogs entering. This was held from August seventeen to twenty-twenty-one. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, sir. As mentioned earlier, due to the fact of due to sickness and family matters, the ordinance has not been updated with due amendments. Uh, I would like to move this ordinance to our line twenty-one meeting once the amendments have added.
So you have a motion? That's a motion. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion on postponing this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor for postponing until September twenty-first, raise your right hand. Outposed by a light sign, the ordinance is postponed until September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Orness number five, to terminate the temporary order on all permits and approvals for the whole diamond and apartment development. Counselor Borde, will you introduce this ordinance?
Yes, sir. Whereas the planning commission adopted Project Frattle twenty forty, the comprehensive master plan on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And whereas the city council and the City of Frattle accepted and endorsed Project Frattle twenty forty on July sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And whereas the city council and the City of Frattle adopted an ordinance for new multifamily resilient standards on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one. Now therefore, be ordained by the city council and the City of Frattle that the moratorium extended by ordinance book twenty twenty-one, page eight, adopted by the city council on April twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, is hereby terminated effective when this ordinance is passed into execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. By order of council rules, the suspended order of society considered not. Is there a motion to suspend the rules? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on suspension of the rules? Hearing none, backfurther we conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Schipman.
Yeah.
Counselor Daxton.
Yeah.
Counselor Chambers. Counselor Scharms.
Yeah.
Counselor Borde.
Yeah.
Counselor Strickland.
Yeah.
Counselor Reddell.
Yeah.
The rules are suspended. Is there any discussion on the rules? Hearing none, all in favor for this ordinance, raise your right hand. Outposed by a light sign, the ordinance is adopted. Resolution number six, to amend this rule, year twenty twenty-one budget interrelief sponsored by the purchase of one twenty twenty John Deere eight-five G excavator to the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative. Contract number three-two-one, nineteen J C, a warrior tractor and equipment company incorporated for the engineering department and cost not to exceed one hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and one dollars and twelve cents. Counselor Jackson, will you introduce this resolution?
Whereas there is a need for purchase of one twenty twenty John Deere eight-five G excavator for the engineering department, whereas there is a excavator for the Sourcewell Purchase Cooperative. Contract number three-one, nine A C warrior tractor and equipment company incorporated at a day cost not to exceed one hundred twenty-nine dollars, they were fifty-one dollars and twelve cents. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council and the City of Frattle that this will be here twenty twenty-one budgets here, uh, amended as follows. Increased engineering construction maturity, one hundred thousand dollars. Increased engineering traffic price, twenty thousand dollars. Increased engineering, engineering drivers, nine thousand eight hundred and one dollars and twelve cents. Increased engineering capital outlet, one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and one dollars and twelve cents. Be it further resolved that funds in the amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and one dollars and twelve cents. Well, say a excavator, I give out operating approval to pay for your tractor and equipment company incorporated to save all the gear by approved appropriated, this will be here twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Engineering capital outlet, so.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor for this resolution, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. Resolution number seven, to release funds for the purchase of two Frattley Protena Protern six-eight-two X F three E K commercial borrowers through the Sourcewell Purchase Incorporated. Contract three eleven twenty-one dash A C zero dash one for Frattle Outdoors with Parks and Recreation Department. And cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Counselor Strickland, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas there is a need for two Bradley Protern six-seventy-two X F three E K commercial borrowers with Parks and Recreation Department. For said commercial borrowers are available through the Sourcewell Purchase Cooperative contract number zero-three-one-one-two-one dash A C zero-one. For Frattle Outdoors, a net cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. For said facility, the expense for Parks and Recreation Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council and the City of Frattle, funded in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars, persons of state commercial owners. All owners were hereby authorized and approved to be made to Frattle Outdoors and set funds are approved to promote this book twenty twenty-one budget line out of Parks and Recreation. Countable by the base. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor for this resolution, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. Resolution number ready, to amend this legal year twenty twenty-one budget, not present the lease of allocation funding that Tall County Heritage Association for the planning phase and feasibility study for a private museum of southern industry in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Counselor, move. Will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas community initiatives are annually budgeted by the City of Frattle and whereas said community initiatives serve the public and are necessary for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Frattle. And whereas the Tall County Heritage Association receives allocations from the City of Frattle for said community initiatives. And whereas the Tall County Heritage Association has requested an additional allocation from the City of Frattle to supplement payment for the planning phase and feasibility study for a Frat Museum of Southern Industry in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Frattle that the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget is to be applied in the following. Increase general fund sales tax revenue, seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Increase community initiatives of the Tall County Heritage Association, seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Be it further resolved that funds in an amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to the Tall County Heritage Association for the planning phase of feasibility study of said project. And said funds are hereby approved and incorporated on fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget as blind out of the community initiatives, Tall County Heritage Association. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all in favor for this resolution, raise your right hand. All opposed by a light sign, the resolution is adopted. Resolution number nine, to amend this legal year twenty twenty-one budget, not present the marriage enter into enter into end of agreement with Frattle Rock, the L L C. Purchase property for Parks and Recreation Department. And a net cost not to exceed one million fifty thousand dollars. Counselor Strickland, will you introduce this resolution?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Frattle leases open land located along the west side of the Northwood Street from north end of the bigger house to the south end of the concrete building located of the north end of Simla to include the green old house for storage of Frattle Properties LLC very least, and the end of the agreement, whereas the City of Frattle has identified said lease lands from property described in the action act as parks of interest for purchase. Whereas the City of Frattle desires to nurture the history of the city of supplement to the city's recreational facilities of the residence and property from Brattle Properties LLC for inclusion of the other of the locals' managed parks and recreation park. Whereas the City of Frattle has allocated of the American Rescue Plan Act twenty-one through the one of ours state and local fiscal recovery funds, and whereas the onset of COVID-nineteen acting citizens of Frattle have been under various lockdowns, shelter-in-place guidelines that may hurt persons on anticipated daily exercises hired by many. Whereas desires to respond to the needs and certain disempurationally impacted communities in the city by according to health, your living environments, and animal regeneration and socialization to mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen, promoting increased mental health. Whereas the Toronto Bay State and local fiscal recovery fund commits to use of such funds for investments in parks and outdoor spaces that serve to say purpose. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council and the City of Frattle that the mayor is hereby authorized and entered into agreement of the Fratland property LLC, purchase said property. And that cost not to exceed one million fifty thousand dollars. The reserve of early fiscal twenty twenty-one budgets hereby amended as follows. Increase general funds revenue to COVID-nineteen, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand. Increase general fund sales tax revenue, one hundred eighty-six thousand. Increase parks and recreational capital outlet, one million fifty thousand. The reserve that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute and any and all items. Next series is very odd in terms of this resolution. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Yes, sir. I do have, uh, concerns about the Compostos Department. I have agreed to sponsor this. I have had conversations with Mr. Coach, our chair, our March 20 committee, as to the property that she built to be beneficial to her department and the city. Uh, I do not want us to be a burden on our citizens as far as taxes and this, uh, co-division and this, uh, capital. This, um, COVID money, so to speak, which is in a position where it's not a burden to our taxpayers as far as the cost of the, uh, piece of property. So that's why I have agreed to sponsor this, this legislation tonight and, uh, hoping all of it will be something a little bit relevant to our city. Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. President, I have a, uh, question for our senior chairman. Um, is purchasing land considered a matter of permanent nature?
Mr. Stripland, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it is.
According to our, our rules, section twenty-one that we adopted at the beginning of this plenary, you know, a ordinance of a resolution of a permanent nature shall be adopted at a meeting in which it is introduced unless you announce the extent be obtained or the immediate consideration of such ordinance or resolution. There would need to be a suspension of the rules moving this forward, see.
I do agree with Mr. Stripland's assessment, and that is section twenty-two of the rules, uh, which do require unanimous consent for suspension for matters to be considered when they are first introduced.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir. I have a concern on whether the use of the currently referred to pick up and holding would be under the Parks and Recreation, so.
Yes, sir. Mr. Jackson, do you have anything?
Okay. Yes, sir. Um. I would actually, if I'm curious, because I've done some research, and I know that, uh, with this money, that they encourage the municipalities reach out to the community that seek feedback as to how they feel, uh, this budget is spent considering that it's going to affect, you know, those who have been negatively affected by, uh, the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So I was just curious as to, uh, have we thought about reaching out? Because I was just there, uh, in this valley of our country where they're doing a survey the whole forums and bringing in constituents and asking them, hey, what are the, what do you think we could do with this money? So has that something that we consider? I'm not sure. Yeah, because I think, uh, that's something that, uh, that we need to look into because I know I read, uh, online where at Mobile they had money, they posted forums where they brought in local pastor to leave to get some feedback. Uh, you know, I was thinking, you know, uh, have we looked at this money? We talk about small businesses, I would consider, I would possibly help small businesses. Have we looked at, uh, how we could possibly help, uh, those who are in the rural system? Uh, talking about, I don't work in the school system broadly to make issue of concern. So have we looked at, how can we try to improve broadly, uh, for young people? Uh, I know we're looking at purchasing this land. But have we thought about possibly, uh, looking to upgrade some of the parks across the area? So we're talking about trying to improve part of their life. So what about spinners? And I know some of these organizations, you know, that are not city-owned property like spinners. But have we reached out to spinners and say, hey, anything that we can do to help you guys with this COVID money so that we can help you guys improve the park? Door Town, we found out that Door Town Park that belonged to us. Have we reached out? They thought about reaching out to them. Now, or school system, whoever owns the land, say, hey, what can we do to try to improve that park up there, Low Creek Park? Uh, recently, I had, um, a lady who is heading, she's heading, uh, uh, a group of others who lost young, lost their children. And she said, Mark, we want you to come up with, like, to have a meeting outside for the support. Well, they wanted to do that Low Creek Park, but at the top, there's no park, there's no rest of it. So have we considered to those? Also across the country, looking at using money, sewer, water, stone water, all these types of areas. Sorry. I know, uh, going down East Sixth Street would possibly use this money, but West Sixth Street going down towards that park. I was traveling around the other days, I broke, but I would consider possibly using some of this money to be for roads. I constantly get asked about sidewalks, and I live across the country. And this is some of the people, some of the neighbors who use this money. Sideways, infrastructure, all kinds of other problems. Last year, I helped, uh, the Y E C A set up a beach for families that were struggling. And every time we went out there, they would go, I think I saw them walk in. Every time we showed up, there were a lot of cars. So I would look at possibly using this money to help those that are in need right now. Because the pandemic is not over. So ladies, this is something I'm concerned, and I would love for us to be an emperor of the community, uh, out of spirit, so it's over.
Mr. Jackson, do you have any, um, a district meeting or anything to bring this in terms?
I did have a district meeting, but I would like to see, uh, city as a whole have some type of forum. Because like I said, down in Mobile, a quarter of the yard or, and that's what they've done down there. They're doing it, like I said, all across the country, getting everybody, yeah, so.
So you have a question or instead you don't raise a question?
I would like to see this whole forum, some type of forum, invite citizens in and get their feedback, uh. I saw, um, an announcement, a link that I saw, that they're tracking how municipalities across the country are going about, uh, doing surveys and allowing citizens to with online, if they can't come over there, allow them to send in their suggestion. But I think it's important because this money is taking, taking this for citizens. You know, we want. You know, we want to do what's best for those that are in need, that are struggling, and we want to take care of them. Like I said, small businesses, we talk about small businesses. Um, someone mentioned today that businesses down here just shut down. I did not know they shut down right along here. And I know that they've been there, so how can we help these people that are struggling?
And I know we have approximately what, six, four million? You remember eight, eight million dollars, one million. Right, and we spent it on employees below a million. And then we got this, it's only two million, so that we can round approximately five million. That was estimate. So what we can do is we can, we'll, we'll take that further paid.
If you're, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Just bring up a few, few items and, and, uh, Captain Jackson, I appreciate you bringing some things up. Uh, we do have, uh, some discussions going on about some additional batteries, uh, and cook, uh, upcoming budget, where we will find some empty R monies. Okay, uh, in low people park and also right here directly behind us. Uh, so that is, is, uh, our handle for Sixth Street. There is some serious challenges there. Uh, there was a sewer line put in there, I think in two thousand four, and since then, obviously, the, the, uh, all the work that's been done, and I think we've made it three times since two thousand four, trying to get our, um, traffic coming, um, devices taken out of there, funded in, but, uh, but there are, there are, we're already working on that, and I don't know. Uh, we have some plans for some other monies built looking to that, growing as well. And I had made a communication with the Board of Education about trying to negotiate with the, uh, Chancellor or negotiating for the Kings Park. And I have made the contact, some local, local community leaders as well, so I have good pasture, but then also one high student uh, center as well, appeared to be in some of that, this. Some of the islands you never all, you and I discussed about what kids, this might be done, I think it was Taylor Street and also, uh, Blue Lane. So somewhat connected with sewer, so some of that might be able to be some federal money or money. Sure. But, uh, look before we work with this council on all the projects.
All right, thank you, sir. One other thing.
Yes, sir. And I would like also, um, ask, have we made sure that allocation of federal, uh, quality gas lines given by President Biden in the same quarter back in January of the advanced racial equity school uncertain areas to this, uh, federal project? All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, our butts are very closely on route. Nothing on this cost ticket before even recommending that this be allowed for this. So, um, they know has done the background work and has rightly assured us that this fits all of the guidelines.
I would, I would, I would. Fine, we move on. Fine, man, heard we've conducted a call, roll call of perspicacious rules.
Council Striplin?
No.
Council Jackson?
No.
Council Chambers?
Sorry.
Council Sharps?
Yes.
Council Vortek?
No.
Council, Council Stritchett? Council Ben?
Yay.
All right, this will be placed on September twenty-first agenda. Uh, the next council meeting, resolution number ten to be in the fifth week of twenty twenty-one of the Intergovernmental Festival and agreement, a per the Corona virus state and local fiscal recovery funds to regular full-time and part-time employees in amount of one million four hundred sixteen thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars. Counciler Chambers, we can do this resolution, yes, sir. Uh, whereas on January first, two thousand twenty-one, the city council of the City of Prattville authorized a single payment of four thousand dollars to each regular full-time employee and two thousand dollars to each regular part-time employee. And we're asked said payments were meant to provide additional compensation for the extraordinary demands placed on the City of Prattville employees to meet the daily needs of the community. And we're asked said payments were permitted and encouraged to be paid with funds from the American Rescue Plan Act through the Corona virus state and local fiscal recovery funds. Whereas on July ninth, two thousand twenty-one, said payments were made in the first full pay period after the receipt of said funds. And whereas the city desires to amend the budget to reflect the actual expenses incurred and actual grant revenue earned related to the payments. Now therefore, it resolve that the city council of the City of Prattville ratifies and confirms the single payment of four thousand dollars to each regular full-time employee and two thousand dollars to each regular part-time employee totaling one million four hundred sixteen thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars. It further resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby amend the fiscal year twenty-one budget as follows. Increase general fund grants revenue COVID-19 one million three hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred eight dollars. Increase the general fund sales tax revenue of forty-seven thousand three hundred sixty-six dollars. And increase human resources premium pay COVID-19 one million four hundred sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. So we, or so move, Mr. President, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a second, is there any discussion on this resolution?
I have, I just have one curiosity question that with the amount of funds we have from COVID that we receive, why are we dealing with the general fund sales tax and not all of it coming out of the admitted proceeds we received?
There you go, I have to tell you, there's certain employees that exceeded standards or so, or what we had to do was pull from their own fund to be able to pay their, every employee. Okay, so we, sorry, sorry to pay. Is there any other discussion? Here it done, all in favor of this resolution, raise your hand. All opposed by like sign, the resolution is adopted. At this time, we have a need to discuss matters related to commerce, economic development, private funding, real property purchase and or leads executive session. The chair will entertain the motion to move into executive session. We have a motion, we have a second, we have a second. And third, we take roll, roll call vote.
Council Striplin?
Yes.
Council Jackson?
Yes.
Council Chambers?
Yes.
Council Sharps?
Yes.
Council Vortek?
Yes.
Council Stritchett?
Yes.
Council Ben?
Yay.
I would expect to make an executive session for terminus to an hour and will return and will complete the agenda without a mandatory session. Well, now, resume the council meeting and the time is seven twenty-two. Resolution number eleven, to operate American negotiate real estate terms and conditions for project cats. Councilor Bill will be interviewed as well.
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville has an opportunity to purchase real estate in the corporate limits of the City of Prattville for project cats. And whereas the City of Prattville has an interest in acquiring state real estate. And whereas state real estate is an economic development opportunity for the City of Prattville. And therefore, made it resolve by the city council of the City of Prattville, the mayor is authorized to negotiate real estate terms and conditions for project cats and report back to the city council with agreement for consideration. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second, is there any discussion on this resolution? Here in none, all in favor of this resolution, raise your hand. All opposed by like sign, the resolution is adopted. This occurs on the agenda nine, a council of those economy is first president. Is that, and if you would, we say your name and address, if you have previous to address the council.
John Lee Finnick in two eleven, dear Trace. Um, so my question before was, um, desired, desires to be responsive to the needs of certain disproportionately impacted communities. What exactly does that mean for the one million and fifty thousand? I mean, what does it mean? Why is it in there in the rest of the room, do you want to address that?
President, so I, I don't.
Tell me a question.
You know, parks are very, very important, it covers, goes across.
How big are they?
Our parks are very, very important. And that's one reason why, uh, the federal government thought they were important.
But it says certain disproportionately impact.
That is some of the different areas.
In the city. So what are the communities in the city?
We have different communities in the state, and, and some of our, uh, this more impacted, and so our these are probably what we're talking about, this is a little off, you see. So we're going to head center about like physically and mentally, um, helpful to this community.
It's an open piece of land. I mean, how, how did COVID affect an open piece of land? I mean, I just, you know, I, I don't understand, I could understand it if it was an enclosed building or something. And I don't understand that tho- those communities that are affected that can't come to an open piece of land.
Well, that's, it's not about the land. Part of the.
What, you're buying a closed land?
It's about people being impacted. And I said this for our mystery, uh, that, that you think there, because it break back so many different embreeges and everything else, which is basically a delivery method.
You guys just blow me away. I can't believe you're thinking of spending a million fifty thousand for that piece of land. And I know that people want to make money, but a hundred and ninety thousand is all they pay. And granted, things come up, but good Lord. I mean, come on, and the water's not potable, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do city water for the whole thing? I mean, it just, you guys, it stinks, some smells, literally and figuratively. And I don't trust you.
Is there any questions for the council? Thank you. Yes, sir.
Patrick, Lucas, way without the cattle cross. Here in the great preferred in him.
Basically, can you restart for a little time?
Um. Just a bit of that on what she said, so. We already do things down there. Pictures. Million plunkets. Christmas decorations. You know, this is already what people do. So why don't they maybe buy something that is already used by people? Of adding, uh, the communities here. I mean, there are still people here in Prattville, the safety tanks. I mean. But that is already used. People are really using pictures. Sidewalks, rainwater, slabs, and everything, take pictures. But there are people that have no safety tanks, I mean, no city sewage. Um, and you said that you talked to somebody in North Island, I reached out to them, you know, some stuff was going on. Remember you said when you addressed about these other parks, and you said you talked to somebody at North Island about, you know, parking or something? But normally, I was making this up there to go, uh, this is my thing here though, for real. How can you all sit up here? And whatever he says, y'all disagree with. And when I say y'all, I'm talking you, 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 you. I mean, y'all don't even have no voices. The mayor said we wanted, yeah, yeah. I mean, you guys were voting in, and you said at the last meeting, we made the decision, we put in place what we want, and y'all just gotta deal with it, that's what you say. And so y'all, when she asked the question, nobody could answer, everybody looked around, oh no. But y'all are city council. Y'all are responsible for the citizens of Prattville. I mean, you guys don't feel bad about that, or what y'all do, y'all just proud of? Y'all just proud of, ready to stand, y'all make. Y'all tell us that. But let me ask you, is June nineteenth in the twenty, twenty-two budget? To give, uh, city employee for the holiday out, because I heard somebody said he wanted to mention a personal thing, so. Is June nineteenth in the budget? Y'all get the purchase. I guess I'm just talking to myself, I don't have to answer anything. Uh, I wish we had on whatever house we run, so. Don't be another dispute.
Is there any questions, no more council? Thank you. Is there any other one that would like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Tom. I didn't say a white second, six twenty-one West Fourth Street. Now, I, I want to talk about this, uh, resolution now. About us spending all this, um, COVID money on the same, the same issues there. You know, going back to talk about COVID money, they, they, you know, President Biden made a clear. You know, he said that we should be talking about increasing our rates in a way that doesn't disforce the impact of low income families. And incorporating an equity analysis. Incorporate, incorporate an equity analysis into making the budget decision include cuts. That means we should incorporate, having everybody across the board. You can't tell me that the guy in that toxic leaning over there paying the one who are making a fifty thousand dollar is going to incorporate everyone. No, it's going to benefit somebody pockets. But who is that? I don't know, but somebody knows. And why sure? I want to also commend before my time is up, the three that decided to table this until the next meeting, because something, something in your heart, you got to understand that this is not going to benefit the whole. We got to look at parts, we got parts in Prattville. These parts need to be upgraded. That piece of land don't need to be upgraded, be bought by our money. Sidewalks need to be, uh, in place, that way more citizens can walk up and down and walk in a safety ladder. We need broadband, we got students right now that failing, that can't get connected to the internet. Y'all know this is another thing that happens down, we need, we need them to be connected. Why can't we use the money to connect the internet and, and update our broadband? Electrical bridges. Council Striplin, and even in my, in my theory, every time we get lit, anytime we get done, our lights go out in this year morning. I know we had broadband because we, you know, I have to commend, you know, uh, Council Jackson, because he
because he, he, he did have a district meet. He invited me because he wanted me to talk about infrastructure, because I do know something about infrastructure. And I came and talked to him, great to see this about infrastructure. But we got a new band. Why can't we have a city town hall where we invite everybody? In the military, we had city town hall because our general came. But what do we say for the City of Prattville if we can't get right out of our cities? And last, before my time is up. What are we going to do about the Bluewater Army? We worried about protesters everywhere, but what are we going to do about people getting killed right in our city land? We, if that's something we got to do. Thank you. And again, that's a question, what are we going to do about Bluewater?
Where? Where have, not in October, but they denied, or this has been, okay, October, we did. We had a public hearing on that.
Thank you, sir.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? All right, now, we'll move into our closing comments. Mayor? Council Striplin? Council Jackson? Council Chambers? Council Vortek? Council Stritchett? Council Boone?
Yes, sir.
And I have, and we'll have a budget hearing September 14th, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. Also, the next city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Open.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a second.